All right, can we get everyone to stand up?
The port's pleased and satisfied of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. Welcome, sir. Just to let everyone know, our meetings are recorded. Can I just get everyone to turn off their cell phones so they're ringing? And just remember, audience participation is for five minutes. All we really ask is that you state your name and work capital event or first name, last name if you want to do that, and your town or residence. All right, I have to get a motion to open the public hearing. I'm proposing application for...
Funding year.
Thank you.
Oh, no, I forgot.
Note to self, funding year 2024.
Will you open the public hearing?
All in favor?
I'm sorry, Brian, I left my copy of the local, of the public hearing notice on my desk. Sorry.
They were separating divorce and all that, but my dad, he got hurt at work. And for thirteen weeks, we took him on, she went to the mom's, she was over here, and we didn't hear from her for a day. I told her, "My church is all right." I was like, "Not to the other side." I know, it's rough.
It's time to post another. So it's gonna be, supposed to have the opportunity.
It's one more time hamburger. Five thirty. Probably before four or five thirty. The other picnic food is gonna be eleven thirty, twelve. So there's a ton of food, so come on down. A lot. And I think they, I think they always estimated this year, but.
Hey, come on over.
We have a lot of, a lot of baseball games on the host, so.
What's the weather forecast?
Right now, it looks rainy, but we're having a rain or shine. Too much, too much exposure.
Sorry about that. But he probably has it in your staple to your pile there. Okay, this notice appeared in the Times Herald Record on June eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Please take notice that the Village Board of the Village of Otisville does hereby start a public hearing on the fifteenth day of June two thousand twenty-three at seven P. M. At the Village Hall at sixty-six Highland Avenue, New York, on proposed application for funding year two thousand twenty-four Orange County Community Development Block Grant Program. The village invites public comments and suggestions regarding projects to be considered for funding under the Orange County Community Development Block Grant Program. Under this program, a variety of physical improvements, as listed below, are eligible for funding. Acquisition and disposition of real property, public works, public facility, or site improvement. Code enforcement, housing and health codes, clearance, demolition and rehabilitation for public use. Or economic development, housing rehabilitation, loan and grants, special projects for elderly and handicapped. Provision of public services, shelter, clinics, senior nutrition, et cetera. Payment of non-federal shares of other grant programs, relocation payments and assistance. The village will be considering projects to be submitted to the Orange County Community Development Block Grant Program. The deadline for the middle is June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. The village's board will let the above date, time and place where all persons interested in the subject matter here are. Persons may appear in person or by agent. All written communication addressed to the board must be received by the board or prior to the board act or prior to the public hearing. By order of the Village of Otisville Board of Trustees, Christine and Pablo.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
I just want to add that this grant is for, we're applying for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in sidewalks. Sounds like a lot, but it's not. This would be for, from Village Hall right over here in the corner, as far up as we can go for a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is not far. But that's what we're applying for. I guess I'll open it up to public comment. Anyone from the public? Yes, sir.
Mike Hornbuckle. I walk the sidewalk pretty much every day, and I agree with you, it's very needed. My question is, you mentioned you want to start at the Village Hall and go as far as you can go. Is there an option of doing the worst sections instead of a continuous line?
Let me add to what my goal was. My goal when I found out about this was I wanted to go from Village Hall to the bridge. And then when they came back with how much that was gonna cost, and I'll say how much that was gonna cost, it was five hundred thousand dollars to do that. So I only saved from Village Hall down. It doesn't necessarily have to do that, but the one thing that I would add is I don't think we want to do it in sections. I think we would want to do it, like, the goal is to get it all done. The question's gonna be, how long is it gonna take to do that? This is probably part one of a lot to come.
My, my comment is that from walking it every day, the worst section is farther on up, closer to the bridge. You might want to consider reaching backwards.
That's absolutely, I have no problem with that. Our engineer was going to come up here, since obviously this has to be done on the twenty-third, to take photos of all of this. So again, I'm not married to starting a Village Hall, I have no problem starting down there. I haven't walked it in a little while, obviously I do walk it, but I haven't walked it in a little while. So if you're telling me that that's the worst part, I have no problem starting down there. I just didn't want to do it where we do a little section here, you know, you know what I mean, you know what I mean. Okay, so I have no problem to change what I said to start it from the bridge and cut down. We'll get that to the engineer too. It's just, you know, this, it's narrow, it's just, yeah, it's, it's.
If we do them side, correct?
Yes.
Up there, they won't do both sides, so then they'll eat up, you'll get nothing done.
Right.
It has two sides up there.
Well, when I asked the question about the other side of the road, I was told that we don't own the sidewalk.
Only up at the top, right? We did put the ones on this side, like nearby the Burick's house. Like right across from here, didn't we put those on part of the grand, on this side?
Yes, but that's not what Brian's asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying about a bridge.
About one highway, you know.
One highway, we've never done anything with them for thirty years.
The engineer told me we don't own it.
Right.
He looked, yeah. So this is, this side of the road, starting from the bridge coming down to it.
What's up with county?
People.
For the people?
I, the people did it, yeah. For whatever reason, but if you look at it, there's a piece of sections, I think there's bluestone in there, which they. But, okay. All right, any other public comment? Thank you, Mr. Hornbuckle, for saying that. Thank you. That's a simple fix. Okay, moving on, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I look at motion with please.
Thank you. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I get a motion to open our regular meeting? Motion to open. And it is seven oh eight.
Seven oh eight.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I get approval of the minutes from our June first, two thousand twenty-three public hearing and our June first, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting of the Village Board of Trustees?
Make motion that we, seven minutes, let's present.
Thank you, a minute, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents?
Okay, not too much today. The draft copy of the meeting minutes from the July first regular meeting and the July first public hearing have been distributed. We received Bank of New York melon statements for the weeks of May thirtieth and June fifth and the month of May twenty-third. On June eighth, two thousand twenty-three, the Village Board received the signed affidavit for the public hearing advertisement regarding the June fifteenth public hearing. Letters have been sent to the Fire Department, VFW, and American Legion regarding the dedication of the Veterans Park Pavilion in Lou Marizio's memory to be held on July twenty-second at ten o'clock. The May two thousand twenty-three New York State Department of Health Water Systems Operation Report has been received from Frank Valentino.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
Tom Maho, Jim?
Sure, okay. Last meeting was held at the Senior Senator, we held our annual police awards that night. The officers that received awards were Officer Camatino, Officer Benjamin, Officer Johnson, Officer Decker, and Secretary Murray got reward, awards for the annual police awards. We appreciate. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, June twentieth, since it's a holiday on the nineteenth, and seven thirty. And unfortunately, due to the lack of interest with summer rec or counselor, I'm not counselor, it's the campers. They had decided to cancel this year's summer rec program. We hope to start it back up next year, but there was less than ten kids signed up. We had three signups, we sent flyers to both sides of the schools, and we had less than ten kids sign up for camp. So we decided last night to cancel it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you for the.
Oh, I'm sorry, and last thing, June, tomorrow, the DMV vehicle will be at the Town Hall from ten to three. That's all I have, sorry.
Jessica, thank you. Lori?
I think most of my report is gonna be tucked away when we talk about procurement and best value. We don't have anything separate on the part.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we've been working on the ball field, trying to fix some of the fences down there, best to our ability. Definitely gonna need to do some replacement on, uh, used to backstop A and B in the next couple of years, if they're in up shape. We had to fix the water service on State Street. Unfortunately, if it's gonna be down, we're gonna replace the water nine years early, but we couldn't dodge that. Frank did the newsletter, sent it to Diane, all righty. The monthly water report, daily usage, the village was seventy-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-four gallons. The state prison was one hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-five gallons per day, daily. Beginning of the month, I went to the highway school, came back with a couple of good things. One thing, with the new DMV certifications, we were paying the three hundred dollars, or two hundred dollars was for the guys to take that new class. But we were able to train the guys in-house and use our own trucks. Well, since that, that is no longer allowed. You have to have a certified instructor be the one that teaches the driver to take him to the road test. So no matter what, they're gonna end up having to go to a driving school and do it that way.
Will the union help out with that?
The union's looking into it, but like, right now, they don't have, it's a whole grant process, and we're, I don't know. And the one other thing that we need to do, I was looking at the calendar today, we need to put a reminder on Facebook and all that. Cause Tuesday, July fourth, no garbage day, it's a holiday, so we're gonna push everything back to the Wednesday and Thursday. I also brought some stuff back to the garden club that we got the D C hat up there, which is very interesting. That's all I have.
John, on the average daily usage, any idea why we're still running so high? I mean, that's double what we normally use.
I don't know why we're like, and we've been monitoring closely, it's been over flowing.
Right.
We look for leaks, you know, I think we just got people using.
The last time this happened, where we had such a huge spike, and, and we resolved the issues. I don't remember, did we have somebody come in to do leak detection?
Which we have, it's on the schedule, we have sometime in July, they're coming to do a whole scan of the village.
Okay, cause I really, I have to believe with doubling, I mean, that's, that's seventy-seven thousand gallons a day. That means about thirty-four thousand gallons above what we normally do.
That's not people just filling.
No, it's not.
No, but it is, it's surface, it's not surfacing, right anywhere where you find it.
Well, we found several the last time we did it, so. Good, it's all around the schedule, we're.
Yeah, that's what Frank, that Frank got.
Yes.
For us.
Okay, good.
Yeah, they, they tell me do it for free.
Good.
Thank you, Fire Chief's report here tonight, so we'll skip over to trustees' reports. Now, if memory serves me correctly. I guess you're all first.
Do you have a kid to go first?
No.
He's.
He's on, yeah, I'm sorry.
Well, Lance and I always.
No, good, no bitch.
Yeah. Before I start with my, what I have, I just wanted to follow up with Mike's comment. His point is well taken about where the sidewalk is worse, but when we really think about it, I, I have thought about, thought about it up. We have more people walking to the downtown area than we do have people walking to Village Hall. So it, it makes perfect sense to start at that end, so thank you for mentioning, because we might not afford it. Okay, newsletter articles, thank you. I probably had more people submit them on time than usual, so that was a wonderful thing. We will extend the deadline until weekend. And if you have something that you cannot get to me by the weekend, let me know that it's coming. Because I can even send the things to Heidi for layout and tail hair, but expect this many more pages, you know, we, we do them for it, sort of thing, so. Try to get them to me by the weekend, and if it's gonna be farther down the road than that, let me know. Thanks to everybody who did submit them, thanks especially to Kate for doing the fire companies again. And that's it. Yard sale, the county permit to reroute the traffic on Highland and Seagull was, has been submitted, so we don't anticipate that to be a problem, it's been the same every year. Community Advisory Board finally had a meeting. We met at the FCI Training Center last Tuesday. We are going to be back on schedule starting in October, so it will be every three months beginning this coming October, so that's, that should be good, thank you. All new administrators at the federal prison, some new administrators at the state. You may already know this, I knew it was coming, but I didn't realize it had been implemented. The staff and visitor entrance to the state facility is now off Two Mile Drive. If, you used to go down to their sign and go up, and that is only for deliveries now. So you turn on Two Mile Drive, you go up a couple of bends, and you'll see the sign on the right-hand side. Otisville, Otisville State is going to be hosting a friends and family facility tour sometime in July, we'll hear more information about that. So if you'd like to tour the facility at all, you will be welcome. Both the FCI and the state facility are actively recruiting correctional officers. That was a major focus of the meeting. They are both down, I think the federal said that they were down to eighty-seven percent staffing. So the FCI has a leg up on the state facility in that they are now offering a twenty-five percent sign-on bonus. If anyone signs on as a correctional officer. So if you know anybody who's looking for a job, this is the time to, to jump on in. The FCI is also accepting applications for a variety of other positions, accounting tech, teacher, paramedic, pharmacist, nurse practitioner, H V A C technician. So if anyone is interested in applying for any of those or for correctional officer, you can go to www.bop.gov and just follow the links to apply. I did have a chance to mention during the meeting to the superintendent that the village is going to be contacting her office again to reopen the discussion about the water tower. She was there, we discussed it several years ago, but due to the pandemic, everything got put on hold, that kind of died. So they, they were receptive to hearing that. Something I've been meaning to mention through the village board, and I know John has brought it up before, is we really need to, as a group, come up with some way to get the word out to residents about recycling and do recycling properly. If we have non-recyclables mixed in with the recycling, when the garbage truck gets down to the transfer station, it gets rejected. And it gets treated as if it was just garbage. It has literally been months since we have had any recycling accepted. And that I got from the bills, am I correct? We can't continue like that, we're, we're gonna wind up probably getting fined. So we need to come up with some idea, and, and talking with John would be the best thing, because he probably has a handle on, is it the dumpsters that are really the major problem? I had suspected might be, because one of the things people like to do is put their recycling in a plastic bag and throw it in the dumpster. That gets the whole truck rejected, because the plastic bag is not part of recycling. So food for thought, I've been, I talked to Mayor about it a couple, maybe, when he first got in, and said, you know, we just have to keep an eye on it and see, but we've gotta do something, we have to find a way. I hate to close down those dumpsters, because people use them all the time, but maybe getting some, I'm not sure who's application, but whoever is. Maybe putting something in the newsletter, pointing out that if people continue to put non-recyclable items in the dumpsters, there's the potential of losing that privilege, so.
Make the dumpsters strictly garbage, or you talk about the cardboard.
No, it's not the dumpsters.
No, recycling, cardboard and.
We could haul the hardware separate, and you wouldn't get charged for it, but the problem is then you're running the truck, and I guess there's some time now, and after this, and after that. With years ago, this is going back, probably, twenty years ago, we used to do that, we used to run the papers and cardboard separate from.
It wasn't that long ago, because we, it was about ten years ago, yeah, right around the time I came back to the village board is when we went to Seagull.
Exactly, but that's cause the county had a use for it. Now that Chinese are not buying it, it comes from where the neighbors, that's where the big customer was, now they're getting really tight, and it's, doesn't matter, it's, it's every little thing. There's one little plastic bag, if soda bottles, if there's, just back to that, if the leaves are on the soda bottle, it's mean, plastic's plastic, but it's mean, that's two different types of plastic, and it's not a.
I think it's just a way to.
It, it, it could be.
It's gonna be hard find.
It's gonna be hard find. We went through this years ago, one time, we did it, we went through, me and Raphael and Frank, and we went, and we went through everybody's recycling, we made piles, what was, check. We didn't get to done recycling until almost eight o'clock at night, and it was, we had a lot of arguments, but then the county relaxed a little bit, and this is where the problem. Once these people start to get their mindset, it's, other places, what they're doing, and I was talking to some of the highway guys when I was at the, the thing, and what they're doing, it's like, will help them, is they provide containers for the residents, separate garbage cans, and it seems to be working, but that's an additional expense on the village.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, if you could just kind of have them take note when they're picking the stuff up. If they, because right now, they're using two different garbage cans, if they're recycling, they're putting one out that they think is more recyclable material. But just to take note as they're dumping those and see, is it, or are they still throwing in styrofoam made cartons and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I can have them do next to recycling, pay a little attention more to it, and then.
Yeah, just to give us an idea, as I said, I suspect the dumpsters are.
I don't know, but I can't.
We can find out. Most, most, most villages, most in Orange County supply garbage cans to the residents, and it has their name on it. Matter of fact, let's use the village of Goshen as an example, give a green one and a little.
But aren't those cans the ones that you need the lift, you need in a lot of extra, to break or thin out?
Well, I don't know.
You don't have to buy them that big.
Right, I get it. But our truck, our garbage truck does have a can checker on the back of it. When we put it to last one, we, we put on a can checker, because even the regular can, they're getting, we had the older guys in the back of the truck, it's hard for them to pick up, just helps them.
I go to all three transfer stations every day, in case everyone doesn't notice, and I'll talk to one of the guys tomorrow with Hampton, and I'll see if they have a flyer, and maybe I can get it, or keep it into our newsletter, and maybe we can just start educating. I mean, listen, even on a local level, if you notice the recycling cans, our own cleaning woman here is no longer bringing bags of recycling cans, because it was just easier to pick up the recycling and throw it in the dumpster. So gotta start somewhere, so we'll educate, 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 and if you see any major people violating it, I guess we'll have to figure it out.
It's hard, cause we even tried to hunt down at the baseball field for the little league, the one there with, with FOTUS, and they had recycling things all over. After a little while, when it gets too full, people just start using that as.
Trash.
Yeah, if it's not taken care of.
People are, it's hard for them to have it there.
Yeah, it's hard.
The county does have a, a nice.
All right, we actually sent them out with the, we sent them out with the water bill so hard.
And they need a lot of literature.
But because the water bill's not getting tenants, maybe we should include it again in this newsletter.
Listen, why not? If you have it already beautiful.
Yeah.
And then you smoke away the county that also, the literature they sent out, flooding, cause they have money, of course, to flood them with literature. They do the same thing in the city, people doing the same thing, and they flood them with literature, and that got people turning around, actually realizing. They, they may read it once, but if you flood them, then they get it in their mind, so they have to see a price on that, of course, and put signs up in the village, maybe, to let them know. It gonna cost us money, but in the long run, and they change people from doing it the wrong way. Maybe I put signs up, post office, let the big bill signs, you know, campaign, try and let them know.
You know, it's plus, it's right now, it's like, it's an extra ten dollars.
They ain't gonna have.
I mean, it, it aren't a per time on, when we do the recycling, so, but it's thirty, a thirty dollars, sixty dollars a month, and at the end of time, it goes, it does add up, and it goes.
Listen, let me just say this, if you have a guy on one of the trucks that is out, and they see something that looks wrong, ask them to take a photo on their phone, right? We all carry cell phones, and maybe we can use that on our Facebook or website. No, yes, right?
Well, and we could.
Long as there's nothing saying what address is, yes.
Yeah.
Do it, do it.
We could come up with, same thing we have for garbage, you know, the stickers, you can't pick it up, you put the sticker on it, we could come up with something like that, if, if they see that, you know, they can tell just looking in, that it's gonna get rejected, so. All right, like I said, it's not something we're gonna solve overnight, but the only other thing I have is just to mention that tomorrow, Saturday morning, the Garden Club, Home Town Helpers, and the Girl Scouts will be down at Veterans Memorial Park. We have our annual Flowers for Friends event, and what that is, is the Garden Club teaches the Girl Scouts how to pot, pot of plants. Home Town Helpers collects the pots, the soil, the plants, and then we deliver them to our Home Town Helper neighbors and a select, a lot of other senior citizens in the area, so. It's a great event. Ten o'clock is when we'll be starting, probably be doing the delivery about ten thirty, eleven o'clock. That's it for now.
Thank you, Dan. What was the dates for the next one again, just in case?
What is the fifth? What was the first Saturday?
What do you got, Lance?
I know, I'm, I do agree with John and Brian on the B field, that they're looking at that as the time to get fixed at the backstop of the, so. They have something to that. You guys doing the great John in the park, so, I'm gonna let Brian talk about it a little bit, a little bit. I talked to Dan myself about trees, and the trees work two ways. Fall's a good time to cut them, the spring, or the, almost at the middle of summer. Could you cut the trees now, they're still, as he said, growing for the summer. He didn't forget about us, he said we still have another two weeks, so he gonna get to the park, the trees are still grown now, or growing for the summer. He's an expert with pit, so I'm, I'm gonna go to him. So anybody else asks for trees, that's it. As far as that comes, well, he's gonna, let him do it, you know. I talked to Lori, yes, if the violation's in your yard, she's gonna let you know, we're excited. Really send a letter out first, and then decide that you moved a violation. She's not gonna go snooping around your backyard, but as invisible to you, she'll reject you. It's not about making money, it's about getting people to comply with those rules. So we're not there to make money, but same time, if everybody else will do the same rules, we don't have to do it. That's about it.
Thank you, Lance. Brian, where are you at?
All right, real quick, but the Fire Chief just texted me now, the ladder truck is still out of service, and in case anybody sees the billowing smoke out behind the bridge, they have a controlled fire burn going on right now. Staying with the Fire Department, I handed everybody a little pamphlet last week. I tried to get with Lori the other night, and.
Brian stopped.
In my, yeah, that was, you know, one thing led to another thing, and she was gone before I even was able to meet up with her to, right? We're here for the record, the inspector, was here for the inspection issue on the last one. But, I mean. But, I mean.
I got this, I'll tell you. I got into her ear about, we just wanna make sure that the person doing electrical is licensed, that's really good. I kinda got into her ear about it when she first saw this and I grabbed her, like, before you got here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Actually, between Lance and you is when I kinda wanted to talk to her and, um, yeah, that, that's really the only addition, but I think we were good the first time, I think we're gonna do it obviously.
Yeah, if you guys don't have any issues, if there's any issues with it, let me, um.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Get it out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, do we?
We have to vote for this, so.
Do we need to put that in there though?
That's where I was speaking to Brian about yesterday, we know for sure that that is a requirement, but should that be added to the RFP? So, if somebody who is, who is, um, you know, bidding on the job, knows, doesn't have a surprise on.
I was familiar.
Yeah. License, right.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're gonna add the.
Yeah, we can just put that in there, then, then you're exempt though.
I'll add it and then.
Yeah, that's soon we can prove it, I mean, it is.
Do you want approval with the addition?
With the addition, yeah, yeah, listen, why wait?
I'll, I'll find that, make the motion of.
Do you wanna do this during your wait call right now?
Yeah, I might, I might.
And.
So.
Can I make a motion to approve the proposed firehouse maintenance project?
Anyone wanna give them a motion?
A motion that we approve the project RFP as presented with the addition of, uh, mentioning that the electrician needs to be licensed.
Okay, I got a second, thank you, all in favor, all high, that was easy.
All right.
Who else you got?
All right, um, additionally, I have met with a few of the local small businesses, um, Danny Grogan was one of them, he'd like to meet with us on proposed reevaluation of his property. Down there with the municipal parking lot. Um, also, I'm working with Nick's Pizza and Pizza Mania, I know it's yours, but they're gonna be helping the Little League with the end of the season picnic this Saturday. Um, you guys are all welcome, it's for the whole community, connect from out ten to two. Uh, there's gonna be all sorts of food down there, I know you have your other end too, um.
Yeah.
Right, um, and additionally, the All-Stars are underway, we have teams playing right now, I have a team out there right now, major softball, hopefully they win. And in the end of August, between the twenty first and twenty fifth, we're having our first ever, um, summer camp for baseball here at our fields with frozen ropes. They were an ally of ours this year, so we wanna promote that, and all we need is forty kids to come out, and right now we're sitting at twenty four, uh, halfway there. And, uh, that's about it, that's all I'm having at the current time.
Come up there and somebody can check out a little bit, Saturday.
It says this Saturday.
Yes.
This Saturday, yeah, so it'd be great to have somebody along, come down again, it'd be awesome. Oh, and don't forget coming up, uh, I believe it's in two weeks, we have a lot of things to vote, have a big vote going on.
It's a week, twenty.
Twenty is what?
I'm sorry, the twentieth is the school election, twenty seventh is the primary.
And then twenty seventh is a town hall primaries and twentieth is the school, so get out, vote.
Thanks, Brian.
What time's Saturday?
Uh, ten to two.
You're up, Bob, what do you have?
Yeah, a couple of little things, um. The planning board will, will be, I'll be before again in July, since the planning board attorney determined that when I have a conflict, uh, my brother has to attend for me. And he was, he's recovering from surgery, so he couldn't go this long, plus the, uh, the modifications that they wanted to the site plans right back then, so. I'll be before then in July, hopefully I'll finish it up and, uh, we'll be back much longer there.
Just remind me what I'm meeting is, because the first meeting that I went to with you, I told the attorney that I would, uh, come to it, and I know you're not talking, but I still have to come to it. So, if anyone has a question, I, obviously, thank you.
Um, the old school community center, do we make any determination on where the property lines are or?
No, working with the assessor, matter of fact, I'm gonna follow up with him Tuesday, I think, uh, Monday, cause the Halloween, Tuesday.
Thank you.
I haven't heard back from him, so I made a call as soon as, I brought my attention, but I have not, so I will go to his office on Tuesday and find out. As soon as I find something out, I promise to look back for you.
Um, also in the old school community center, they're gonna be announcing their receipt of another substantial grant, uh, in the next, uh, few days. Uh, at this point, the grantor has requested that we, uh, not say who they are until they announce it publicly on the twenty seventh of June. And then on the thirtieth, we're gonna have a little event up there where they're coming up and giving us a grant. Basically, this grant is gonna be to, uh, fix the drive, the parking lot. If we have a redo of parking lot and seal it, so, that's gonna be up for. Um, I found about a boat at the last meeting, I was, my daughter had an office appointment in the afternoon, and we were like a couple hours late. And I didn't get back for that, so I'll be going Tuesday without the. Some are conscious here, we talked about this coming up, and, um, is there anything going on with the board that I just know about or?
I'll, I'll just, I'll just say this to you, uh, I know the person that I had contacted came up and talked to Christine, and I believe you guys.
Frank, Frank, you're not, you're not.
And, uh, he just needed some information, some more information, so I hope when that all gets together, that, uh, he will be, and mind you, we did not contract this person, although this is a conversation so far, just so we're on the same page. Uh, and I hope when it gets to a certain point, he will come to one of our meetings, and if he can't make it, then at least supply us with what information he has, but I guess this went pretty good, right? I mean, it sounds good, definitely talk to Christine a little bit about it, so, uh, to be continued.
Uh, that's all I got.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, I'll run down mine super quick here, I hope. Um, Monday the fifth, which was the town board meeting, uh, for police officers, congratulations to all the officers, unfortunately, I didn't make it there either. Um, my son and two other people, um, as part of Otisville Troop One Boy Scouts received their Eagle Scout rank. So, that was Thomas Carey, Andrew Monahan and Mason Hayne, let's see, right, the village two is Mason Hayne. Um, congratulations to them, to be continued, as far as the ceremony and stuff, well, that's being all planned out, but, um.
Congratulations to your son.
Thank you.
To the chief.
Yes, 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 so, that was a couple hours, but anyway, uh, I'm sorry I missed the police awards, but, uh, I did make it towards the end where everyone left. Um, I met with the contractor for the bridge, I was hoping to get an update for this, so my update is this. Um, I thanked them, they went around and they spoke to the local businesses, which I think eased some tensions there, um, which I think is great. Um, they are still working on a couple of things, one, they're looking for, uh, an office. I guess what they were looking at didn't work out, but, uh, they're looking for an office, they had a couple of the questions, uh, which I know they came in, they talked to you and kind of also, yeah, so, okay. Um, they were here for like half an hour the other day, but they're working on stuff, it's gotten postponed a little bit, so let's stay tuned for maybe July. Um, I'm hoping to see, um, um, I think part of their thing was, they talked about this as a ten month project, but somehow, some way, when they sat down and figured it out, they're gonna do it in six. Again, just rely on the information, so I hope it happens fast.
Are you still starting in Ju- are you, you said they're starting in July or?
Uh, July is now the new, uh, yes.
The new June.
Yes. They, they are waiting, just to tell you, they are waiting on one thing, um, and I guess it has something to do with the contract getting to them, and, yeah, so, let's. As of right now, we're gonna go for July until they come here and tell me differently, but, um, so let's, more information to follow. Um, Jim mentioned the DMV mobile unit is coming to town hall Friday. Um, all I wanna add to this is I already booked for July twenty first, which is the Friday for it to come back here to village hall, so we are on the schedule for that. Um, I don't know, uh, I'll, I'll add this, um, they are taking residents from Sullivan County or wherever you are in the state, it's not restricted. I know that came out, but that, they're taking every resident that wants to come here, so, um, I'll get a new flyer made up after, uh, they go to town hall. And, uh, we'll see if they're successful, but we will get them back here between town hall and us every month this day. The Dragon Boat Festival, which is, uh, Sunday the eighteenth, and I know you're gonna talk about it, so I'm not gonna, what do you call it? Um, I have some nice flyers over there if anyone's interested, but it will be at the town park, eleven to seven on Sunday, which is Father's Day. Which leads me into, uh, Happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there. Um, hopefully they will do something in the morning and come down to the festival in the, uh, late morning, early afternoon. That's all I have for that.
Right, a, a question on, on the bridge, I know that before they start, they're gonna do the little side room.
Hundred percent.
Do you know if after the bridge is done, is that road gonna stay open as a public road, are they gonna close it back up again?
I have an answer for you, I would have loved to have seen that road be a one-way road, I, all the, let me tell you what the answer is. All the permits were pulled to take that out and put it back to exactly the way it looks right now.
So, there's no, so it's gonna go back to the way it is now?
No. We're gonna try to reverse that, but no, that's a trade now.
Okay, thank you.
I would have liked to have seen it one way, just down the road, that's all, you know, maybe save someone.
You mean, you mean if I'm going way from by one going down.
Absolutely, yeah, if you go to the train station, leave your car, I don't know, you can drop it off, listen, it's two, three seconds, but, you know, I don't know, just the thought. I mean, instead, they're gonna put it back and make it more beautiful than what it looks like.
There's everything that we could do to make it push.
We're working on it.
I'd like to see, they say the way that, you know, the road, there are water main running there, and if we do get a break there, I mean, the, all the trees and stuff are going back up in there and then the water came, the, we were.
Well, and.
The, the thing to keep in mind, this is probably what I was gonna say, because we haven't been using it for any municipal use, we've been paying taxes on it all these years. Which means, I'm assuming that the minute they put it back, we're gonna start paying tax, paying taxes on it, so we could find something to use it for.
Well, that, that we, oh, I can't imagine why they would object if we say just a little, but we'll find out.
Yeah, yeah. All right, um, audience participation, but before I let anyone in the audience speak, hold on one second, I just want to go over and talk about a email, and I hope everyone received a copy of this. Did everyone receive a copy of this email?
Well, you did.
In the email.
Oh, in my, oh, in my email, yeah.
Please, like, read it, look it over, um, all I really wanna say about it, and Lori, if you want me to add something here, please, all I wanna say about it is, we received an email from a local resident, um, to the board. Uh, I'm doing this in public participation because if this wasn't an email forum, this is where it would be. Um, I just think, uh, reading this, I just wanna let everyone know that the, um, uh, what am I gonna say? The, um, I'm trying to think of the word I'm gonna use here, the, uh, no, not the word, no, no, this is, this is for the New York order. So, the, the, what we proposed and passed last night, or what was proposed and what we kinda changed, I just wanna let anyone that listens to our meetings online or anyone that has a question, and please understand, you're more than welcome to a copy of that to see the difference between what was given to us and what we actually signed off on. Obviously, the people that voted for this, all of us should know that there was a big difference between the two. Um, I just feel that reading this email, which I'm not gonna read out loud, but reading this email is, I don't believe this person realizes that, um, that the information, or I'm sorry, what we passed is not what was given to us. And, um, I hope we can reach out to her and get her, okay, um, so she understands that. Again, anyone's more than willing to come here during public participation, write a letter if you'd like and discuss this. Um, clearly, I'm sure some people are gonna be happy about it, some people aren't gonna be happy about it, but if you feel the need to come here and express your opinion, that's the whole purpose of the participation. Is there anything else that I should add to that?
Let's attach the minutes.
And it's attached in a minutes if anyone has a question about what the email says. Okay. Audience participation, just stand up, please, say your name and where you live, and you're good to go.
Yeah, uh, my name is Biu Zhang, I'm living in Oxford, Israel, and I'm a member of the Mount Hood Chinese Association. And, yeah, so, thank you, Brian.
You're very welcome.
Mentioned that, yeah, this coming Sunday, uh, from eleven to seven, there'll be a, uh, the event to celebrate the, the Chinese, uh, wow, the Asian heritage of the Dragon Boat Festival. Where we, uh, we come together and celebrate the, the, there, there's a, there's a hood, uh, the person.
Yeah, chief.
Yeah, so, yeah, uh, there, there'll be, uh, something for everyone, uh, yeah, who's game, there, uh, different Asian food, there was local vendors, yeah, so welcome.
You had me at food for the rest of the.
There are live performances as well, yeah, music, so.
Thanks, thanks, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, I really appreciate your time to answer that, yes, thank you, Brian, for supporting, great congratulations, I haven't done it, I haven't. And I'm so happy to see everyone, and, yeah. Um, basically, just to follow up on that, the Dragon Boat Festival is one of the three, some people consider three, some people consider four, major Chinese holidays in, throughout the history. And this one is to celebrate loyalty and health. Loyalty meaning that the holiday came about is the famous poet, Qiyuan, died for the country because he felt so sad for the country and he jumped himself. So, people tried to rescue him with reasonable, here, that's why it's called Dragon Boat Festival. We're gonna have dragon boat races, we have three beautiful handmade jackets, and looking like, I don't know if that's water, if you have water, maybe next year, we can do real water boat races. So, everybody's invited to do the race, you, you might be able to win something. And, uh, we have a lot of vendors, local vendors, lots of Chinese food, and it will be fun. We are here also, we will have, um, you know, we're working, especially the board, thank you Lance and Brian, and thank you all for that. Asian American Advisory Committee is gonna come to fruition, we'll be doing an announcement. We did take the time, we suggested, five.
Thirty.
Five.
Five.
Yeah.
Five, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so, um, and we will, um, basically, we'll have an opening ceremony, some performances, then we'll be racing and we'll end this ceremony. And, but we are here also, uh, to ask the board to consider to giving, uh, to give us access to the electric panels in the entrance way. Uh, it took me a long time to really figure it out, until, they only figured out today or yesterday, I think it was this morning, that.
It could have been last night, but.
Yes, no, the actual walkway to the, uh, Mount Hood Town Park belongs to the village, yeah?
Yes.
So, those electric, um, uh, boxes that we need access to, we have to get permission from the board.
I have a question, boy.
Yes.
You're looking for access to electric for, for?
It would be, uh, we have some like, um, northern, um, northern medical center, is a, they're Chinese pharmacy, they're, they are, because we are focusing on health and loyalty, so they're, they are the health part. They're gonna be there presenting, um, really the, the, the maggot, I mean, going to some, uh, Chinese medicine, or some Chinese food, which is anywhere like the, is, is a weed, I don't know, grass, grass. You know maggot, right?
No, I wasn't saying no to you, I was saying no to you.
So, basically, it's actually what's used with, uh, in agriculture, you know, it open up your energy channels and purify your body, it's very healthy. So, they're gonna be there, uh, using something to warm things up, pre-made stuff. So, and we also have the information of booths that will be TV, so some light electricity is needed in that area.
Okay, all right, just a question for you, cause I know Brian's gonna ask this, so I'm gonna ask you this.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
In the village part of the park, which I got your map last night, cause I got it, right?
Yeah.
So, and I saw your picture, okay, so, in the, in the fields, in the, in the, in the A, B and C fields.
Yeah. That's in the. Yes. Yes.
They're having, um, all-star event, they're having like all-star baseball events, the village.
No, we're not done, we're the trees.
No, I know that, I, oh, I, I know what you're talking about, I'm just saying, there's, their, Little League is gonna be having in those three fields, they're gonna be having something going on.
At Sunday?
On Sunday, yes.
On Sunday for my time?
Yes, well, I'm gonna let Brian answer you that, but this is in the village part of the park.
Oh. Right.
Now, I know you rented the pavilion from the town and I saw your drawing is where you're gonna have this, and I believe you're gonna even be in, in the, in, in, in basically their field, which is the, the, their, is where I see the dragon boats and stuff in your photo.
That's your field, right?
Their field.
So, we can move away if you see.
Nope, yeah, so the D field is completely fine, that's the town field, we're not gonna have anything up that way.
Oh, yeah. I never figured out the line. I never figured out what the line is.
You know where the playground is, the fence there, that's the line. Anything on that side where the playground is, is the town.
We'll stay away from the village side, you know, right, in the field.
So basically, the tennis courts?
Yes.
And to the pavilion.
So basically, the-
Is all you.
That's ours.
Yes.
Yeah, the parking lot for the baseball fields is for the concession stand, 'cause when we have the games, it's gonna be all utilized, those practices.
So the entrance way will be utilized?
To walk through, you can walk through.
Yeah, you could walk through it.
But we can put booths there, right, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, that's the village park.
My question to, before was, and I was wondering, I said, was anything, did we see this rented? And there was nothing that we received for it?
No, we didn't rent it because of the village, Little League was, uh, was using.
Right.
Now, I didn't realize it was, we thought we are walking inside the town park.
You can still park across the street where parking is, 'cause let's be honest, that's where the parking is.
Yeah.
And you're still gonna have to walk down the center of that, but understand, until you get to that, um, how do I wanna say? Until you get to the playground set, where the fence is?
Yeah.
That becomes the town.
Correct.
So basically, our map needs to be redrawn.
I don't, listen, what I'm-
From one to thirty-seven.
What I'm looking at your map is, I see this, I see the A, B, C field, right? Which is the baseball fields, which, let's just say, that's the village line. Where you are in this field.
That's fine, yeah.
That's the town field.
Yeah.
And that's the pavilion I see in here, and listen, I think your drawing is great, and when I saw this, perfect. It's just, I know what you're saying, you're looking to put booths or some vendors in the parking lot of the entranceway, but that's the village side of it.
Yeah, so basically, it would be used, I was just coming here to ask if I'm putting on application, but it's not possible because you would be using.
Correct. Now, let's talk about the electric part of this. So if, if you don't have vendors there, I know you have electric through the pavilion on the town side. I know there's electric over there.
Right.
And I, and I, and I've been to your, or, or events before there, where you're kind of in front of the pavilion and down in front of it, and then, I don't know about the, the, the baseball field part, but that's a huge baseball field, so that's fine. There is electric there, which, John, correct me if I'm wrong, I know there's towers there for lights, but that we turn on, that's still the village. Even though it's on the town.
Village meter, a village meter.
Okay, so, we could, again, I'm not speaking for anyone.
I'm not catching that area, which area are you referring?
The field.
The field where it looks like you're having a boat?
The town, the town field.
Oh, there are electricity there?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's, it's the town, it's the town field, but it's village electricity, does that make sense?
Oh, yes, I know, yeah, I heard.
So, if, if you're asking for electricity hookup, in that field.
That's okay.
I'm not saying it's okay, 'cause we wouldn't have to ask this, that, that's, that's why I invited you here, I'm not saying it's okay.
He's a boy.
Great, that's, that's important.
That's yours, 'cause that's yours.
Yes, mine.
That, there's a outlet, but that, you guys turn that on, uh?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
That's what she, that's what you found out from Dean, correct? That's why I figured.
So we could relocate some of the vendors, if you will, give us the access, the board will give us the access, then instead of in the entranceway, we can move them into the field.
Into the field, as far as like-
The dragon race.
The, yes, yes, listen, that's, that, we can't tell you that, but I'm sure the town field you find, that's, yes, yes. To walk through there, listen, you have to walk through there, no one's expecting you to walk around and do anything else, it's just, it's parking. And what Brian's trying to say is where the concession stand is for Little League, that would be the walk-through, the parking lot.
Right.
The small park, where the gravel parking lot, that across the, that's gonna be utilized for stuff that we need to do. So, if everyone can park across the street in the big field, we're all gonna live and be merry together.
We have a problem there, I have a question at least. Uh, what about on lowly, 'cause some of them have heavy stuff, like stones and so on.
You can go through the parking lot around the pavilion, I'm just telling you this. You could go through the park, or, around the baseball fields, there's a, you go down to the town pavilion, you can go behind the pavilion on the dirt road and get to that field.
Yeah.
You can drop off.
We can drive, drop stuff, oh, okay, grass is fine, okay, all right.
Unless Jim Jennings wants to stop you, speak now for more, uh, okay.
I'm going back there.
You're inviting, no.
Not where you were talking about, where you walk through, but the next one now.
Yeah, drive around from, to, from.
I'm going back up there after this, I have to, to get things ready, if you wanna come up, I can kinda destroy it.
Yes, absolutely.
I do have another question. As soon as we enter the town park, we could put some of the booths there, just make it more packed. Could we have, uh, electricity, maybe the border ones, in the entranceway? When, we're gonna stay clear of the entranceway.
Yeah, and there's no electrical outlets over there.
In the entranceway, too?
The only thing I say is, you really need to speak with the supervisor, 'cause you guys rented the pavilion only, that area up there. So anything, if you guys wanna expand, you need, really speak with them.
No, I did, I did, yeah, that's, yeah, that's fine. I just thought that the entranceway outlet belongs to the village.
So, yes.
Behind the side, behind the sea field?
Sea field.
Sea field.
So I, I will, I will go, yeah.
I'll explain to you where everything, the intricacies of it.
So I guess the question is, just to, to solve this problem, do we have an issue of turning on electric for them in that town field that we would have the lights and stuff to? I know you're done at seven o'clock, but I would imagine it's gonna be a couple hours to take stuff down, is that fair to say?
Um.
Just shining that way, John?
We want us-
There's off of A field, there's a certain couple ways to go back there, off the back one, the ridge and the.
Do you think you're gonna be there after one is dark?
We want us to leave before it's dark.
Okay, so basically, you're only looking for electricity to plug in for like local lights and everything.
Yeah, 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 for small stuff.
Okay, so the question, and, and listen, I get it, there's, there's always the, most people don't realize where the line is, 'cause it's an invisible line, right? It's not like it says village and then town, I get it. I only know 'cause we did fence when I was on the town side, it's the only reason that I even know where the line is over there. But that's probably the easiest way to explain where the line is, right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, do we, does anyone on the board have an issue of, and again, I don't think you're gonna be using a tremendous amount of electric, it's not like you're running a motor, it's not like you're, I would say, next time you wanna do this, just include us in this.
Oh, yeah.
Come talk to us about it.
I will, do that anyway.
I know you had an issue with the date and the scheduling of the park, so I, I, I remember all, that, that's fine. But I don't know if we've done this before, I know we're not having the fair there this year, I know the fair is going up, so I don't really, personally, I don't really think that this is a huge deal. I mean, I would, I would leave it like this, if for some unknown reason our electric bill is through the roof, uh, and, 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 and a crazy amount of money, I would like to think that we could come to you and say, listen, this is where our electric bill always is, this is where our electric bill is now.
Yeah, welcome, yeah, you know where.
Okay, I do, I do, okay, so.
I don't have, I don't have an issue with it, I just don't know where they're getting all the electric.
There's only one, there's only one, there's only one double outlet, there's double outlets.
So that's all we would be turning on, is that one outlet?
Yes, that one outlet, that's all we're hearing.
I don't know.
Okay, okay, thank you. I think you're gonna have to look at the electricity up there.
Yeah, I have an electrician, he's gonna come in if something need to be locked up, and we'll make sure it's secure.
Okay, and, and as far as you can get, I, I'm assuming you can get electricity off of the village. Now, I will tell you this.
Right, has outlets, right?
We had an issue, someone in the village side was involved with the rental last weekend, and they put the breaker, they had a D J. They had to reach out, well, they reached out to me, but I gave them the numbers for someone in the town, someone up there inflicted the breaker pack. So I just want you to know, and that's the box that you talked to me about that has the lock on.
They opened the door, right?
Awesome.
Yeah, cheers, Sam.
Awesome. All right, I only have one question for you. So does, I'm sorry, does anyone else have an issue with this? Okay, can I get a motion that we turn on the, the, the outlet in question here, and, yes, can I get a motion?
John?
It's already on.
Is there any reason not to? It's already on.
It's already on. What, the power of the outlets? Yeah, they're on for the Little League, 'cause they need to burn eight, they, the paddock age. The only thing, yeah, they, they should be on already.
Okay.
So you're doing a motion to allow the Dragon Boat Festival to use the outlet?
Yeah.
For one that can probably.
On the town property.
Only, it's only a couple outlets, only one, the only thing. There's one outlet on the village meter that runs to the town property, that I'm aware of. Yeah, that's the one that we used to set up for, we used, we set that up for when they had the Princess Panic and the D stuff, but there is.
If you have questions, call either the town or us, one of us will come up there. John lives right on that road, not that I'm telling you to call and bother him, but if it really comes down to a question where your electric-
I'll look at it tomorrow.
Reach out and we'll, we'll all figure it out, all right?
Thank you.
I want there, I want there to be power for the Dragon Boat Festival.
Right, thank you, thank you.
We'll figure something out.
Thank you.
And the weather's supposed to be halfway decent on Sunday.
I know, it kept changing a little, now it's back to the normal.
All right, I just have one last question for you.
Yes.
Um, can you just state your name and where you live, ma'am?
Oh, yeah. You never did the whole?
Oh.
He did, but.
Hold on one second, can I get a motion that we turn the power on, or make sure the power's on for, uh, for the Dragon Boat Festival? What's being requested?
Soon.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Thank you, my name is Mayla, I live in the Mount Hood Town, but I feel like I'm part of the village.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else, public participation? Phil, you gotta say something.
Uh, I'm good.
Thank you, uh, moving along here, uh, let's see.
Uh, well, no, no, you say that.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, John did get that brochure to Lois in the garden club.
Yep.
It was awesome, I mean, it was just, she sent it out to all the members of the garden club.
Is that the one with the flowers?
Yes.
Yeah.
It was awesome. Plants, it was great.
I learned something on there, it was pretty, I didn't see poppy, I didn't see poppies on there, though. Okay. Old business, uh, procurement policy, um, what would, let's just talk about this. I know Diane gave us something which, that's fine, and I, I didn't get a chance to obviously go all the way through it, but.
Do you want me to just explain?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Brian had, which I hadn't realized before our last meeting, Brian had gotten four other villages' policies that we could, uh, take a look at, and that's what's attached to the, couple of them.
Okay.
Thing that I don't think we were concentrating on the last time we talked about it, is the fact that there are two different types of thresholds. One has to deal with purchases, the other has to deal with contracts and services. If you look at the, um, purchases, we are not out of the ballpark for any of these, except for William Village and Garden was higher. Everything else is actually either equal to or lower than our thresholds. So I'm not in favor of changing those thresholds necessarily, at all, because for purchasing, I, I don't think it's unreasonable to say, you know, if you're gonna be spending three thousand dollars, that, um, that you should at least have two verbal quotes. Or, and with electronically processed quotes, one of the things I, I hope people realize is, that could mean you go on Amazon, see how much it costs, and boom, that's a quote. So, you know, it doesn't mean that you have to, like, be sending stuff out or whatever. So, with that said, uh, most of, most, not a lot, of what is, uh, I, I had proposed is, what I thought would be, would be comfortable, pretty comfortable with, is not change drastically. What I did do is, under, um, the number of quotes that are necessary, dropped several of them down to two. Personally, I think I made the point pretty clear last time, I don't think that's necessary, but the spirit of compromise and looking at what everybody else is doing, if that's, that seems to be the standard these days, then they want to go with it. So, just looking at that part, the change would be that anything up to a thousand dollars, department head could just do it, they have the discretion to do that. And they do have, um, authority to charge up to a thousand dollars aggregate, so that kind of is consistent with the, the other policy. Then, from there up to three thousand, at least two verbal or electronic quotes. Like I said, go on a design, get a quote, and you'd probably, done. From three thousand to five thousand, for ease, two written or electronically processed quotations, that's dropping it down from what it was, which was three. And then, the big change is, instead of going five to ten thousand, which we have now, going five to twenty thousand, with at least three written quotes, electronically processed quotes, or at the discretion, written request for proposal. And as long as the board has that discretion, then I don't have a problem jumping it all the way to twenty thousand. If you feel it should be broken down, and I mean, I'm not asking for people who agree or not agree, but feel free to ask me questions. With the con, public works, um, so contracts and services, that's where I think we really were under, way under the others. So, again, looking at anything up to five thousand, we will definitely have a problem. At least two verbal or written, written or electronically processed quotes. Again, I think three is still reasonable, but I'm trying to be consistent with the others. Um, from five to ten thousand, at least two written electronically processed quotes. But again, the village board has the, the discretion of requesting proposals. So if you've got something that's coming close to ten thousand dollars, that may be something that could, you wanna look at. Then, the rest of it is, uh, really the same as what we had. Now, what I did was, I looked at all of them, the samples that Brian came up with, looked at what I felt was closest to ours, and while we hold it, it's Chester, and even with zoning, I always looked at Chester, because I think it's about the same size, demographically, um, or not, economically, but. And without even realizing I had done it, I almost mirrored Chester's. So if you look at what the requirements are for Chester, and what I was proposing that changes today, they're almost identical. So hopefully, it met, meets the needs of raising some of the thresholds for services, lowering some of the requirements a little bit for quotes, and still having, still having enough teeth in the policy to ensure that we're getting the best bang for our buck. So, that's where it came from, take time, look it over, and see what you think.
I don't know if anyone else looked at all those things, pile up my desk, but thank you, Diane.
Thank you for getting them.
I just, I, um, I had asked Christine to do a little changing of our numbers, which I know aren't correct and perfect on here, but, um, I'll leave it, uh, I'll leave it as, um, um, yeah, I guess, I, 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 and, and I know we had gotten a copy, just to make sure everyone got this copy tonight, or, uh, it's the, um, what do I wanna say, this is the best value, um.
Yeah, I can pop in on.
Yeah, perfect, perfect.
Like, the content, the substantive content contained in that two-page document have this, would be the basis of the local law that we proposed. Obviously, there's, um, a couple references to another municipality, and it doesn't match up exactly where the code would be, where it would be, where it would be amended to fit into where, where the changes would take place in the rules. Always so, and obviously, you would identify, correct the municipality, but due to the, um, recent hiatus, um, this was what I can give to Christine in time, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so substantively, I would not be prehending anything different to you all, I think that's, as we noted the last time, these should be, you know, this will require a public hearing, the local law, so, um, it makes sense for these to be packaged together and discussed together. That's, that's pretty much it.
So we're not gonna move on anything today?
We wait for a public hearing?
Well, we could schedule a public hearing, right?
I would, I, I think that, um, if you could, we just gotta get, this has to be adjusted in, uh, before you put a notice out, yeah. So, um, you could do it, conditioned upon the amendment of the, you know, the procedural mechanisms and the municipality and where in the code this would go. Um, as long as the group's comfortable with that, then I would feel comfortable allowing that to go to a vote, go to a public hearing, and then everybody can come back and discuss Diane's, um, suggestions and whatever other suggestions are in, um, the procurement policy. We can do it all at once, and next maybe.
With the way the calendar falls, we don't have another meeting for three weeks, so there is time to do that.
Perfect, perfect.
Is everyone all right with doing a public hearing on this?
Absolutely.
It would, it would, the public hearing will be our next court meeting.
July sixth.
If that's what you're telling me our next court meeting is, then I. Three weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I was, I just can't.
We'll get the changes, we'll get the. We'll get the changes, we'll get the bills.
Yeah, just want to, maybe there's any ways to reduce some of that. There's so many different levels.
Um, let me say this. I kind of gave, so our original one, just to show you, you didn't see it, our original one is jumping out here, um, was this. And the only way that we came up with it was, is to change this, this, to tell you, went from, a- again, this is in stone, but I'm just telling you, like, this, this, not going from zero to four, four, nine, nine, but I, I think I had written that, but, yeah, and then, and then the percentage went up from there. The only thing I kind of changed a little differently in wording was, same type thing Diane was talking about, two written, but I kind of liked one of them that said fax, email. Fax or email or electronic, however you would say.
Yeah, I was just thinking, is there a way to make it go from, like, what you have, and then from that, whatever this word is, one hundred to, to ten thousand.
Correct.
Ten thousand, nine, ten, nine, instead of having ourselves, only having three or four.
Well, like, the, 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 I know, I know what you're saying. Yes.
So just have it from five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, you're still getting two written, you have email quotes or whatever.
I think they just did a breakdown of, right, if you look at it, if you look at, let's just go with jesters as a new thing. You got, excuse me, if you'd have, you'd have said it went from, uh, a thousand to forty-four, nine, nine.
Right.
And, and then it goes five thousand to nine, nine, nine. But if you really look at what the difference is, there's not much difference between what you need. I know what you're saying, okay. It's really that when it gets up to that ten thousand is how they changed it. I'm not saying that that's, okay, okay.
I, I like the two reasons.
All right.
And I, I, mind, I did drop one of them, but see, then it goes from ten to thirty-nine.
Right, cool. We'll move on.
Just a friendly suggestion, if possible, and this is a good, a good subject to use about, um, maybe over the course of the next three weeks, people have their proposals tightened up, and you guys use a work session before the next meeting to.
Mm-hmm.
Talk about it.
To talk about it, and that way, when we get to it on the agenda, you have what we're already on, as opposed to, so, I don't know, if you want to set, uh,
Yeah.
You know, even if it's fifteen minutes before the meeting, sixty, forty-five to seven, that, that you guys have.
Do so. Uh, do your research, each one of you, and let's just meet, like, six, forty-five, and we'll do a workshop from six, forty-five to seven, obviously.
Motion. Since.
Yeah.
We'll go from there. Okay, ahead. We've got three weeks to do this.
Yeah, I, I would prefer to meet before the night that we're gonna be quoting on it. And since we have three weeks in between, if people were agreeable to picking another night to meet, only because, I mean, the other board members pulled them through this. We'll sit at these workshops and have things out.
That's why I got rid of them.
And.
That's why I got rid of them.
I was.
Come to, and come to an agreement.
Uh, okay, listen.
I was almost thinking the same exact thing, and that way, if there is any changes, she has time to write something differently and then show.
What day would everyone like to meet?
Even if it's a day with four.
So.
Well, that's why I prefer, I prefer.
It's not four. I, I'm not, I'm just saying it has to be the day.
No, no, I just was, I was saying.
Word, no, I'm, again, so many, I don't know, I don't know if you throw. Whatever, I don't know.
Well, you're the one.
Twenty-ninth, Thursday, twenty-ninth.
Scheduled.
I know. I have a lot going on, so twenty-ninth works for me. Thursday, twenty-ninth.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm probably, I'm probably going to be, I'm probably going to be up on the twenty-ninth through the fourth of July, the fifth of July.
And then I, I'm gonna say Mo and I would be available by Zoom. I don't know if that's an option for that particular setting. I don't know how much of my presses particularly need, if you're just manipulating numbers and that.
And we're manipulating numbers. Listen, I, I, I'm not in disagreement, but I kind of like meeting, maybe if you're willing to do your research, put something together, and, and maybe send it out, um, or throw it in an email, and then maybe I can kind of break it down, because obviously, I don't know that all five of us are gonna agree on this, but I kind of like the idea of meeting maybe fifteen or twenty minutes before the meeting. Um, not that I'm opposed to meeting on another day, but I think that this is kind of not really a, it is major, but we're talking about numbers. And when you really look at it, we're talking between putting something to five thousand or three thousand, or, so if you have an opinion on it, um, send it to me, and let's meet, um, maybe twenty minutes before, and we'll just do a work, or a session before, all right?
Yeah, put that to a motion.
I'd like a motion for that.
Motion to set work session.
Six, forty?
I give you an hour, Christine.
Seven, no, no.
Yeah, because even if it's not typed out, we're gonna bring it on version two, type it out. I mean, listen.
Two session work is six.
Yeah. Listen, as long as we're in agreement on numbers and trouble. All right, can I get, can I get, you know, this is, you're doing this great, can I get a motion on that?
I made a motion that, um, July, if, we get a, 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 July sixth, July sixth, sorry, and for the workshops, we, this is going.
This is twenty minutes before meetings. And that will be videoed.
Yep.
See, it's, it's, absolutely, go ahead. Can I get a second?
We'll be no vote during the work session. We'll put a vote, we'll be.
To discuss other bits of the criminal policy.
Thank you, Lance, for your motion. Can I get a second, Lance? All in favor?
I have a second.
Right.
Rory.
Sorry. Don't listen to me, I, I.
I know that we have to have minutes from the work session, but work sessions have to be videoed?
They, I don't believe they do have to be videoed, but I would.
We never did before.
Um, they are open, they are open to the public, so, you know. We didn't really answer it, but. Yeah, I mean, there, there.
Uh, listen, I'm about open meetings. I'm about people that don't like to come sit in the audience. I'm about, you wanna watch what goes on here, it's on video. So, if anyone has an issue with that, yeah. Okay, moving along.
And you still have to do, you, you never did do a motion to set your, oh, hearing.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to set the public hearing for?
Make the motion to set.
Set a party, yes. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else? I forgot, Christine.
I don't think so, I don't know.
All right, new business. Next slide. Uh, quarterly review asylum. Uh, fourth quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, March twenty twenty-three, and May twenty twenty-three, uh, is due by the second meeting of August twenty twenty-three. So, I'm gonna read these, but you already know this. Malogues is Lance, cash receipts is Diane, and, uh, bank recs is Bob Cluck. Going on to be here, uh, water account number three, seven, five, requests a refund or late fee, uh, and re-levee fee. Uh, we all got this email. Christine, you wanna go into a little detail on what this was about?
Uh, yes, this customer came in this week. Um, she had had a one hundred and sixty-three dollar water levy on her tax bill, which was for the March water bill that was not paid, plus a five percent late fee and a one hundred dollar re-levee fee. She asked for a refund, stating that she could not receive the bill in mail. And, um, you know, since I don't have the authority to do that, and I, I did explain to her that she couldn't write to the trustees, requesting a refund, um, but that it would have to be in another form, that we cannot take it off of the taxes if you, if you decide to give her a refund. In checking her history, she does pay on time within thirty days every, every period.
And has done so for five years.
And has done so for five years. So I, I do believe she was being chused off when she said that she didn't receive the bill.
Can we just make a credit to her water account?
That's what I told her, it probably happened.
All right, can I get a motion that we, uh, credit her water account for the amount of?
Hundred dollars.
One hundred dollars and one hundred and three dollars.
Okay. I wanna make a motion.
One second.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
When you send it to her, to let her know that we're gonna do this, just point out to her the months that she should be looking for it.
I already told, I did get that right.
Because this may get confusing, because she's gonna get, like, a, a zero bill, probably.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, firehouse lady's room, kind of already discussed it. We set up what we needed to for it, so moving on. Uh, motions, motions and resolutions. Uh, board resolution, uh, governing body fair housing resolution. We'll have to read that resolution.
This is on the back, on the way to the last page. And we are required, just so everyone knows, we are required to pass this resolution every year in, in order to be able to, um, participate in the community development program. The Village of Otisville supports Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, federal fair housing law, and the New York State Human Rights Law. It's the policy of the Village of Otisville to implement programs to ensure equal opportunity in housing for all persons regardless of race, color, religion, ancestry, sex, including pregnancy, national origin, nationality, familial status, marital or domestic partnership status, sexual or sexual orientation, atypical hereditary, cellular or blood trait, genetic information, liability for military service, veteran status, mental or physical disability, perceived disability, AIDS, HIV status, and lawful income or source of lawful rent paid in Section Eight. The Village of Otisville further objects to discrimination in the sale, rental, leasing, financing of housing or land to be used for construction of housing, or the provision of brokerage services because of race, color, religion, ancestry, sex, national origin, handicap or disability as prohibited by Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, federal fair housing law, and the New York State Human Rights Law. Therefore, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Otisville do hereby approve the following resolution. We have resolved that within available resources, the Village of Otisville will assist all persons who feel they have been discriminated against under one of the aforementioned categories to seek equity under federal and state laws by filing complaint with the New York State Human Rights Law and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development as appropriate. We have further resolved that the Village of Otisville shall publicize this resolution and through its publicity shall cause owners of real estate developers and builders to become aware of those respective responsibilities and rights under the federal fair housing law, the New York State Human Rights Law, and any other local laws or ordinances. We have further resolved that the municipality will at the minimum include but not be limited to, one, printing and publicizing of this resolution, a fair housing public notice and other applicable fair housing information through local media, community contacts, and placement on the municipal website and in other social media. Two, distribution of posters, flyers, and any other means which will bring the attention of those affected, the knowledge of their respective responsibilities, and the right to deserve equal opportunity and policy.
Thank you for reading that. Uh, can I get a motion to authorize, I'll make a motion, the signature of this board resolution?
That's a different, that's, that's a different one. You're not authorizing, that's a different thing.
What is, what is, signature of authorized represented on that?
That's a second motion.
Okay, can I get a motion?
We're getting, just getting a motion to adopt the resolution. Adopt the resolution as read.
Thank you. Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, moving on. Um, let's see, board resolution authorizing the submission of the, um.
Funding year.
Thank you. Funding year, FY, funding year application for consideration under the funding year twenty twenty-four, Orange Urban County. Thank you, Community Development Program.
I believe that one too.
Hold on, hold on. No, yes, good. No, this one, this one's small. This one's not, it wasn't as big as the last one. Yes, go ahead.
And, um, this, this is the, uh, resolution in order to authorize us to submit the application. Board resolution authorizing the submission of the funding year two thousand twenty-four application for consideration under the funding year two thousand twenty-four, Orange Urban County Consortium Community Development Program. The Village of Otisville is hereby submitting its application for consideration under the funding year two thousand twenty-four, Orange Urban County Consortium, Community Development Program, and Mayor Brian M. Carey is hereby authorized to submit this application for ADA compliant sidewalks on Highland Avenue, phase one, as described in the proposal. Input from citizens and groups has been received and considered, and an application has been prepared which addresses their community concerns. They further certify that they have read and understood the Orange Urban County Consortium Community Development Guidelines for the funding year two thousand twenty-four program year and have met all of its applicable requirements, and that the information contained in the application is accurate and true to the best of their knowledge. If awarded CDVG funds, the municipality shall implement the activities in a manner to ensure compliance with all applicable federal, state, and local laws and regulations.
Will we approve the resolution as read?
Second. Thank you, thank you. Bob, thank you, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, board resolution.
That's it. That's the whole thing with their, Mayor Carey to sign the Urban County qualification cooperation agreement.
Motion for Brian to sign. Thank you, Brian.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Lance. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, can I get a motion to approve, uh, paying bills?
Will be fair bills.
Thank you, Bob. Second. Thank you, whoever said that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, more comments? Bob, you have anything you want? I'm sorry.
I see one thing.
Go ahead.
Um, the Orange County Highways, which, yeah, the, um, they're hosting the golf outing this year, which all the proceeds go to the Honor White. Um, I have raffle tickets. They're a hundred dollars a piece. I put five hundred, put it for a side-by-side, if anybody wants any. See you meet before, uh, next meeting.
What is it there?
Side-by-side. It's a side-by-side, it's a.
Like a UCD?
It is, it's a side-by-side. Um, just so you know, with the history, they've been doing this the last few years, and last year, they gave fifty-five thousand dollars to the Honor White, and they were able to take down, I think, like, forty-five veterans.
I didn't win last year for the record. I didn't win.
I didn't win.
Oh, it's good.
I think you did. But it was, all right. Uh, Bob, you have anything?
No, just happy Fourth of July.
Uh, Brian? Lance?
Cut your grass.
Thank you, Diane.
Go vote July.
All right, I just wanted, again, to wish all the followers, happy Valentine's Day this Sunday.
Go vote, Sarah.
Go vote. On the twentieth, we have the school board election, which is next Tuesday, and then we have a, um, primary here in Town of Mount Hope on Tuesday the twenty-seventh, and that would be at the Mount Hope seniors'. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn? Make a motion?
Second.
Thank you, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
All right.